She speaks four languages.
Not Chinese, right?
Yes. First generation from here, so you know the nation.
Ready? The meeting tonight is for the conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at the items marked on the agenda, public comment. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please state your full name and limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
So we have a public hearing today's meeting, tonight's meeting, on the Chapter 137 exemptions from Cold War veterans. And so I'm gonna open that meeting and then we're gonna start now with the regular meeting, with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for brave men and women fighting all over the world for democracy and freedom. Also a moment of silence for one of our own, Cal Cosman.
So I think, I don't know if everybody knew Cal?
I do.
Yeah, he was...
He's my uncle.
Yeah, it's your uncle, so...
He was also a World War II veteran, Marines. Marines, period. Marines, sixty years with the, over sixty years with the fire, the volunteer fire department. I'm already his chief at one time, too. And about twenty, twenty-five years with Tom Vag, he volunteered there also. He was very involved in the community in twenty-five years, I think, was about how long he was here with the water department.
Right.
He never left Marlboro, he was born here.
Born and raised in Marlboro.
And actually born in this house, they had a house back there. They came right to Marlboro, that's where he was born. But he never left here and always donated his time to the town.
I knew Cal, he was a very, he was a gentleman. So he'll be missed by the community. Well, thank you very much for that. So I need a motion to approve the agenda.
No motion.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve minutes from the January eighth, 2018 town board meeting. Need a motion for that?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Authorized payment of bills in the amount of $405,730.62. Need a motion?
Motion to pay the bills.
Second?
I'll second it.
All approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Daniel's gonna kind of now, we think we skipped something.
Just need to go back and motion to approve the minutes from the 2018 reorg meeting as well.
There's two of them there.
Yeah, two separate sets of minutes.
The second one's...
Sorry, yeah, okay. Sorry about that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve minutes from the 2018 reorganizational meeting.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Any, there's no presentations, say? Comments on the agenda? New busi, oh, yes.
When you get to the thing on the urgent, could you just describe how that works in terms of, is it one hour, three hours a week, that sort of thing?
You see the rest of it?
Okay, sure.
Don't go anywhere, Jerry.
We have the chief here, so he could really get into it. Thank you, Mark. So any workshop topics these guys would like to talk about? We talked about direct meeting that we had?
Well, two things. We met with the electrical, um...
Oh, that's right.
People from Central Hudson, right, Howard? And so we did all the buildings. We walked through every building. Hopefully by this week, she'll be getting us some numbers back. So how it works is depending on how you use your energy, how many hours. It could be free, it could be partial, it could be not worth it. So it depends on how it's used. Like in here, like he told us right off the bat, these lights probably aren't gonna be able to be changed out because of the amount of time that they're used. It's probably not worth changing them out, from their perspective or our perspective.
So if they were on all the time, there would be a business case?
Business, yeah, business case will justify a replacement.
Right.
And the more it's used, obviously the more, less out of pocket it would cost us to do that, and the offset would be better.
Places up.
Now, the only other issue with this building, me and Howard came into contact with Patrick as we were doing the audit.
Yeah.
And the school district also now is in the middle of doing the interior of their buildings. They said that they didn't get a favor, was it, a favorable?
Response?
No, they didn't get favorable numbers back from Central Hudson, so they say, at the time that they did it. That they're working in, with a new group, and I guess they could get funding by using this group. So, you know, the school has different ways, right? Yeah, they have different ways of getting funding for their buildings than we do as a town because of the school. So we'll get the numbers separately for this building, right, Howard? And then we'll present them to them. Again, they would have to say yea or nay.
Right.
Sounds like they're gonna be more of a nay, because they have their own thing going. But she's gonna separate all the other buildings out for us, and hopefully we'll get a good response, at least from 1650 definitely, would be nice, so.
Right.
But it was a good tour, a good, good education. So that was on the one thing, me and Howard had went around with, and then the other thing was, we, me and yourself had the recreational meeting with the rec team, and just from the board, just so you get a heads up, is the first thing, and I think it was forty minutes of the meeting, we're talking about playgrounds again, at the park.
Right.
So, well, they have, they have some people that are involved that wanna do some things as far as getting like an ADA compliant type system up there, that could get handicapped children onto the playground.
All-inclusive.
All-inclusive.
Yep.
They're looking for funding, maybe trying to start a 401, 501(c)(3), charitable contribution group. But we're also, we said as a town, we would look as far as, does Frank or Mr. Larkin have any monies available that could help us? Because this is about...
This is to replace or add on to?
Replace.
Replace everything.
Where it is currently.
We were figuring what they wanted to do, the ground covering, the machinery, all the things that were going, we're talking like a $200,000, right? Somewhere near 150 to 200. Depending on what they decided to do, so...
Is there a committee that's heading this up?
Patty Hadouy is on it, and...
I can't remember her name.
Yes, yeah.
So is that gonna, is that gonna be, it's gonna be the same footprint that we have now?
That would be totally different.
Same spot, but a different configuration of everything.
But the same amount of space?
All the gravel will be gone, it'll be...
Yeah, maybe a little bigger. They were also talking about putting one of those, trying to get one of those sprinkler type, uh, systems in.
I was wondering, I was, that was a tough spot, with the trees and everything.
Actually, it's a great spot.
Because I don't like the shit.
Of course, the bathrooms are right there.
Oh, okay, that's true.
They actually liked it, we actually mentioned that. We mentioned that, that we'd be thinking it should go somewhere else, and they were like, no, they liked it.
Yeah. All the places that they've been to.
For kids to kinda like run through. They have, I think they have it in Newburgh, they have a couple other different playgrounds.
Oakmont Park, that's a really nice one.
Oakmont Park. So, I mean, they're thinking big. And if you're gonna think this way, you might as well think big at first and see if you could get it all, get it. So we were very receptive to it right out, and we said we would do anything we could to look for funds, because our, you know, let's face it, our playground, although it is constructurally built well, it is out of date. It does need, um, replacement.
It's gotta be almost twenty years old.
Yeah.
It's too late for my grandchildren. I think that one up when I was in high school, so it's old.
But there's things that we could...
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
We might be able to, if we do get, get funding, and we do get money, we talked about trying to save parts of that, and utilizing it down by the pavilion, if it was possible, try to utilize it, if it was salvage.
That's fantastic.
So...
And anything we do up there has to go through our insurance company, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that water thing might be a little bit more insurance.
Yeah. Yeah. They do a lot of insurance.
And then the last part I was about, so then we got into the nitty-gritty of Tom Vak, and we talked about this a couple meetings ago, about what we received from Tom Vak and what it costs to operate Tom Vak. We got the numbers for last year, last year's numbers to operate Tom Vak was approximately 7,000, and this is including heating and electric.
Heating and electric.
So, heating and electric, not any charge for snow plow or anything that, because they do it, our guys do that, but it's 7,000. So we've had years that have been 9,000 because of the cost of heating or electric, but now we're down to around 7,000, so that, which is good.
Well, not making a sound anymore when you go by.
No, well, that's debatable. Sometimes we go by and the doors are wide open as they're working out with the heat on, so that was talked about.
Yep.
That was brought up, that you can't have the heat on and the doors open. If that's the case, shut the heat off while you're working out.
Shouldn't those thermostats be locked? I mean, most places like that, they are.
We talked about a new thermostat system, but with, yeah.
Who was there at the meeting?
Patty. Patty was there, Joe Wild was there, Vince Manisi was there, myself and Al.
And the lady from the playground.
And the lady from the playground, and also the lady at Zumba.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, so right now, just to give you guys a head up, Zumba is anywhere from 150 to 190, is there checks that come in somewhere in that range?
A week?
A month.
A month?
No, about a month.
A month.
The Taekwondo gentleman, he's around 80 to 90 dollars a month in that ballpark. He's sporadic, he doesn't have as many people that go there as Zumba does, but believe it or not, he uses the building more than Zumba does.
In small groups.
Because he's doing one-on-ones, or maybe two people. And then Joe's been using it in the winter for boot camp. He doesn't use it in the summer, he uses it at his house.
Boot camp's at his house in the summer.
So we were saying like before, we're not looking to make a profit, we're not making to make money off it. We're just trying to pay the bills, even if we're a little under. So we, me and Al came up with, we're trying to get like around 500 a month if we could, 450 a month. 500 a month would be about $6,000, so, right, so we're still under our 7,000 figure, but we thought that would be fair, because we're doing this as a service for the community, okay? So me and Al were talking that these, these guys gotta start paying like around 150 a month, 200 a month, and we wanted to get your feedback with what you thought, I mean...
What does Joe pay, anything?
There's an issue, Joe has not paid anything.
So maybe it should be like something like, if you're gonna use it as per month, like Joe might use it for four months or stuff, it should be 150 bucks a month, regardless. And the karate or the, the other gentleman, even if he uses it with one guy, maybe it should be also 150. She's probably dead even, because that's what she brings in, an average, if you look at her whole average, it's around 150. Sometimes she has an uptick, but maybe it's like one or...
So for four months, you're gonna have 450, so you're really, even with that, you're not gonna get to that $6,000?
No, you know, I don't think you're gonna get to that, but it sets a precedence for somebody who wants to come in, then you know that you're gonna charge them 150 a month and not the 15% of whatever they take in.
Right, does the 150 a month allow you 30 days access to the building? Do you take care, do you know when they're there, is there at one time? Like if you pay 150 a month, you can use the place 30 days to schedule a month.
Yeah.
Well, they have a schedule.
I would think so. I mean, how would you care?
I mean, she uses it three days, typically around three days a week, depends on the weekend.
Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, I think, for Zumba.
But the karate guy, he could end up using it six days a week, because the way his classes are, he has a lot of one-on-ones. Again, his classes may not be as long-term.
I have no idea where they're actually, might be on...
And then Joe, I think, uses it twice a week. But they have, they have a whole schedule laid out. But yeah, Alan, I mean, your, your point is well taken, right?
Then the heat and electricity comes up.
You could...
I don't, I don't, I don't see how you could control that if you could charge him about 50 a month. I don't know how you separate...
It still would have to be in the schedule, you'd have to... Could you pay, could you do it by the hour or the day or something like that? It's complicated.
It's just hard, because we can't judge how many people are going there, and then are we actually getting the correct, it's, it's just an easier way to just...
I think you're ready, you're right with putting a number on there. Then it's up to them if they wanna pay that number. And if, you know, as a business owner, then if you need to get more people involved in Zumba, you have to do that, then that's what they'd have to do in order to maintain with that.
I think she's had the problem.
She don't.
Well, even him, I'm saying if he wants to do it...
Well, yeah, he's, he's the one that would have to go out and see.
Start soliciting, get bigger classes, otherwise he might have to not do it.
That offset in rent money with what he's getting in.
I mean, every...
We all know.
He was, he was in the tops building there, and he was paying a lot more, 150 dollars a month, I'm sure.
That's just what I'm saying, is anybody who, any one of those people complaining about it, if they were out to go and rent a building three nights a week, four weeks out of the month, they're not gonna be 150 dollars.
No.
It's gonna be 150 dollars a night.
Like Scott said, it's, it's also a service to the community.
Hey, I'm not, yeah. I'm not knocking, I'm just saying it's...
No, 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 no.
Protect us, too.
Do you guys think that's a fair number? Is it too low of a number, is it too high of a number? I mean, that's...
I think it depends on the person, I mean, you know, who's, how much they're using it. I mean, you take her, three nights a week, 150 dollars, it's good.
Well, like I said, it's, it's plus a $7,000 last year, just under 7,000, so...
So you need to get between 150 and 200. If it goes crazy, and man, really using a lot more, it goes up 10,000 a year than mine.
We could tell, right, we could tell the usage by the heating and electric cost, that's how we could really judge it.
See, I don't think Zumba would have, I, I think three times a week, for four weeks or for four and a half weeks, to charge her 200 dollars a month, I don't think that's a big expense.
But if we see, can we say we're gonna charge 200 a month, but then charge him only 150?
We can give him 200 a month, too, and then he has to just, it's up to him. Because based on her usage, you could say, you're, you're using a next number.
But she's...
He's using it more. I would say two, I would, God, I would try the 200, and then if the guy's, where else is he gonna get a place to train people? For 200 dollars a month.
You gotta realize the condition of that place, too.
Yeah, but he also charges a lot more than she does, I'm sure.
I know, but, you know, the bathrooms are in terrible condition, everything, it's not that great of a situation.
I mean, we're basing it up, like, we, we ran out of 1650.
Try it.
1650, we only get...
It's better than what we're getting now.
I don't mind the 150, I just don't wanna see them.
I don't mind.
Get a view, just at 150, that's all.
I just think, as long as we're getting, I think my opinion is if we're getting five, six thousand a year, I think it kinda basically almost covers everything. And then if we get these LED lights in there, maybe it will lower, and if we could replace some of those heating units, that where we can control the heat a little better than what they're controlling the heat, that might help, too.
Now, we just put a burner in there, not one, guess we did, a couple years ago.
That was in the garage section, yeah.
You know, if we get, if we could sell the ambulance...
It'd be great if you owned it. What, what does the PBA, what does the PBA do with that?
Then we ought, then we ought to start charging them rent. How would that bank? Can we do that?
What are you talking about?
Well, we put that in negotiations.
The ambulance? They left it to the town.
No, no.
Oh, the ambulance, that one you had there?
They got their, their lights, yeah.
Oh, the thing they were supposed to be using the way the trucks...
The fire department?
Sits there.
We cleaned, they cleaned it out, the highway department cleaned that out, it was much cleaner.
Now, now they got lights in there and stuff, they have equipment in there.
Did you sell the, the thing you bought for there?
Way out?
Yeah.
First thing I said to Howard is, I've seen this clean ever since.
I told him to throw everything.
Think it's a good idea to try to make a...
The cleanest, I couldn't even, first time I saw it.
Not use them.
No, no.
The other part, not so much. Huh?
We can fund it and use them, we just want the money to spend on the...
Well, then in that case, why don't we just put them out there and see if somebody wants to give something for it?
Well, I guess we got two meetings going on.
Are you, are you, are you guys recommending 150? You wanna vote on it? What do you want to do?
I, I think if you're in agreement, we could do a vote on it, we can make a motion, somebody make a motion.
Yeah, Scott, sure, I do.
I make a motion that the charge per use of the Tom Vak building for these organizations should be 150 a month.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All three of those?
So moved. Any objections? Okay.
Why you got a hand up there?
James?
I have a comment, it's not an objection to what you're doing, but maybe you should give them a little bit of notice before you actually start charging them.
Yeah, we will, thank you.
Well, they are getting charged now, you're just saying, uh...
We're just changing...
Before we put a set rate. We're changing the, the format.
Yeah, we're changing the model.
We're saving for this time.
I think it's gonna be savings.
Yeah. We actually talked about it. They know it's coming. Okay, I don't have any correspondence.
Oh, my gosh.
Public comments, you have any public comments, Jim?
Thank you.
I just wanted, how did, how did...
Mark.
Just wanted to follow up on what you were just talking about, the use of the Tom Vak. Do I understand right that you were saying, like, people at the Zumba, Zumba lady's paying a certain amount per month, that Joe Wild is not paying anything?
Well, Joe, Joe just started in there. He just started with his, he has a boot camp, he usually does it up at his house, so when colder weather comes, he comes down to the Tom Vak building, so he just started.
But hasn't he done that in the past, because winters?
Uh, he might have, but we didn't charge him. And, but now we're, we're asking 150 dollars for, for anybody who uses Tom Vak building.
Now, is that a certain number of times a month?
It's like Alan says, when you charge by month, it, you know, can't restrict it.
The schedule's open, you use it, you use it one out of 30 days. It's 150 bucks.
Yeah.
Well, we, maybe we should, well, no, Saturday classes, so...
Yeah.
I mean, we're gonna have to watch it, it's out of hand.
Right. It's not like a lot of people are knocking on the door.
Again, the thing is, this is something like, if we had to go out and hire an actual real instructor, or a director, and someone to sit there all week, it would cost us a lot of money to do that. This is a way to actually utilize the building, give some recreation to the community, and we get some money back for the usage of the building. So I think it's a win-win by using it that way and going this route, without having to go out and hire someone, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I have a second question. Have you heard anything from the schools about the impending Holster County Community College coming down, and is there any further talks about that?
The only thing I have heard, I talked to Mike Hein, the executive, a couple weeks ago, was that everything's still a go, and they're waiting for Dr. Roberts from the SUNY College. Actually, he did, he's doing his studies to see what is needed. That basically is where we are with the town. It is the school's building, so they probably know more than I do at this point, but Mike said he would inform me in a couple weeks, so I'll give him a call this week to see what the status of that is. But last time I talked, everything was on schedule.
Mr. Ross, the superintendent, has he weighed in at all?
Uh, they're negotiating, you know, their terms. I haven't heard anything about that, to be honest with you. But I'm told that it's still on course, that hopefully in 2018, in the fall of 2018, it'll be open for that.
Do you expect that the town offices will have to move?
No. The town offices will be the same, the court, just the school.
You go and just go to the left, everything to the left.
So I imagine they're getting down to the nuts and bolts of it, and it's always financial, right? To see what, you know, probably have to fix the steps.
Make a parking lot.
Right. 2019, right?
Excuse me?
2019.
2018, the end of this year, they were hoping.
For September.
Yeah, for the fall.
Al and Scott, how did you leave it with the playground people, just, okay, we're on board, but...
Yeah, we, we support them, they're gonna go for the 501(c)(3).
They are.
We were gonna talk to, down the road, we're gonna talk to Frank and Senator Larkin, we're gonna do everything we can, and we also talked about maybe giving them some money at a $20,000.
We said we would utilize our, our yearly...
Yearly fund.
...fund.
That would be a board decision.
Based on the board side, yeah, to say go and use it for that.
Yep.
But I think the biggest thing we have to really try to find out is if Mr. Larkin or Mr. Scartados has some funding available for that.
I think, before they would go and do a 501(c)(3), I mean, they're gonna spend money doing that, they should probably go and sit down with Mr. Larkin and Mr. Scartados.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, I kinda watched them on Facebook a little bit, like, they were doing a lot of talk on social media, I never came to one of our meetings. So you know what I mean? So it's like, they're, glad you guys finally sat and met with them, to say, hey...
She actually, she had like plans from like three different companies.
Yeah, she was, yeah, she was putting on social media, and I was like, oh, that's good, but you oughta just like come to a town board meeting and do a presentation.
Yeah, I thi, I think sometimes, yeah, when you get into certain things and you realize that, well, maybe I have to, there's some processes that I really have to learn to get, you know, this amount of money and get this accomplished.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, that was, that was done through, I think it was Led, County legislator Phil Lo Cello was the one who spearheaded that park. And that was probably when I was a junior in high school.
The Unico did that, right? And Unico did that, right?
I think it was him, but I think the county, I think the county helped him out somehow.
Yeah, I know Unico put a lot into this.
Yeah. So it was, and it was a community thing. I remember being in the paper and it was a nice thing that they did.
I know Frank does help fund the one in Newburgh. Um, but again, how much time can we keep asking Frank? But I mean, we can keep asking, right?
Gotta keep asking.
I mean, it's a new fresh year.
Everyone's asking. We may as well keep asking.
It's in his hometown.
Means our money.
Yeah, in concept, we, I think, the whole board, you know, appreciates her effort.
Absolutely. Yeah.
And, you know, we wanna help her as much as possible. And I think this, this meeting was like an eye opener for her.
Yeah. It's not the first time we talked about this either.
No.
No. No.
No, I think it definitely needs to get addressed. It's just, it always comes down to numbers, right?
Yep.
So.
Yeah, we could do a lot with money.
Yeah.
Yeah. If we had a couple of million, we could, uh, finish the park down at the landing.
Yep.
I mean, we also did, Al brought up too, is, you know, if, if, you know, when Bayside goes into effect, we will have more monies in our rec fund, which is, that's what it's supposed to be used towards too, things like that too. So.
And their, uh, Bayside is back on the, uh, on the agenda.
Put that down there. That's recent.
Okay.
Okay, so let's move on.
That's nice.
Yeah. So, um, thank you, Ed. Uh, the public hearing is still open for the, uh, chapter one thirty-seven exemptions for Cold War veterans. Anybody have any?
Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
Do you know when the year starts, like forty, ninety forty-five it starts?
I think this is, the, the, the actual resolution is to keep it on the books because it expired. And that's what the resolution is about, is probably to keep it going.
Right. What timeframe do they, are they following the old ones?
Oh, it's in the resolution.
Is it?
So when I get to the resolution, I think it's in there. So it's a ten-year limit imposed with, uh, within the real property. So it's been ten years. Actually, when I was supervisor back in two thousand and six, we proposed this. Now it's ten years. So, uh.
I was there.
But you have to serve, uh, between certain years, right?
Uh, no, it's good for those ten years, right? If you're.
No, I mean, you have.
The years of the Cold War is.
Military during the Cold War, what do they consider in those years?
I, I don't know what the, uh, the actual, you know, if you were in the Cold War, you were, you take this benefit.
Forty-five, ninety-nine.
Well, court, yeah, it would be, it would be the end of World War Two to probably when the Berlin Wall came down, which would be underneath Reagan's administration.
Eighty.
Eighty-nine.
Yep.
Yeah.
In that area.
Yeah.
Something in there, yeah.
Open some roads.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight.
You're right. He was out eighty-nine, wasn't he?
He was in an eighty. Re-elected eighty-four.
Eighty-nine, I think, the wall came down.
Nineteen forty-five, nineteen.
He called for it. He said.
I think it was, the year I graduated.
Okay. Okay, Mark. You all right?
All right, so, uh.
So we're gonna go to the resolutions, right? Oh, no, let's, uh, close the, uh, public hearing. So I need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So passed. Thank you.
Do you have any correspondence, Alan?
No correspondence. Okay.
Nobody wants to talk to you.
Do you wanna stay here? You wanna drag?
No.
I'm.
You don't wanna go home?
There's no football games tonight.
No, nothing to rush on.
They're still, uh, Dart League, right?
Yeah, it's.
Okay, resolution twenty-seven to adopt local law number one of the year twenty eighteen. Supervisor Lanzetta offers the following resolution, which was seconded by Councilman Baker.
Baker.
Who moved its adoption. Thanks, Howard. So basically, uh, this is to renew, uh, the law that we have on the books. It expired, uh, uh, ten years. And this is, uh, this is a great thing. So it's for all the Cold War benefits. It's, uh, Cindy Hilbert brought it to my attention and we, uh, made sure we did it. Is there any questions about it, gentlemen?
No, just for clarification, the Cold War was from nineteen forty-seven to nineteen ninety-one. And I didn't Google that, I remember that.
All right, Alan.
I remember that from history. I Googled it. Nineteen forty-seven to nineteen ninety-one. Is that the internet?
Danielle, can you pull the board, please?
Will do. Supervisor Lanzetta.
Yes.
Councilman Mollinelli.
Yes.
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Koenig.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, resolution twenty-eight to approve and sign the twenty eighteen urgent cooperative agreement. Uh, Chief, you wanna give an explanation of, uh, this resolution, please?
Sure. Um, I just wanted to know how many officers, uh, particularly, right, five, a couple of the town. We were benef-, we were capable.
Hey, Chief, you wanna get, get up on the mics of this range?
He doesn't wanna get up on the mic.
He would have if he had a voice.
So the, uh, the number of people is up to us. We could put on five if we wanted to. Um, but economically, we can't afford to do that. So we do have one officer on the team, two days a week, uh, for all fifty-two weeks of the year.
Serves on the urgent?
Correct. Two days a week. It was regular schedule. He goes to Kingston and does whatever the urgent task force needs.
And it sounds like it's paid by Marlboro?
Correct. It sounds like it's paid by Marlboro. Yep.
But they also send people here, correct?
They do. So the, the, the advantage to it is if we have an issue or problem, or maybe we don't even know we have an issue or problem, but they do, they will send people here to deal with that issue and problem. And it's a lot more than just drugs. Uh, like, for instance, that CVS incident, they would've come down to help us with that, except that we opted to turn it over to state police. But they would come down and they would help with that. They would help with a lot of different things that we need. Extra manpower, their expertise, their equipment. Uh, so it's more than just gangs and drugs, but, yeah.
Do you know how many people serve on that, that area?
I don't know. I know just about every town in the county has at least one member.
Yeah, there's, there's only a few towns left in the county that don't own it.
And even, they're working on getting those town in, like Ulster, Sawgady's just joined.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And is there serving out each year? We could count it back in monetary.
Well, as they investigate their cases and they close things out of courts, there are seizures. They could be cars, could be property, could be money. It all depends on the type of cases that they get and work on and what happens in court. But they do get seizure money, whether it's federal, state, they do get it. Uh, and when they do that, they can opt to refund some of the monies that we've spent to put that person there. Um, the way they figure it out is they base it on the amount of hours that the individual person put in to urgent. They have a formula they figure out and they send us back a check. We did in sixteen, end of sixteen, we got five thousand dollars from that.
Yeah.
So.
Is that the average?
That was the, that was the only check. I'm waiting to see what we get for seventeen. So, so I'll know more soon as they decide to give a disbursement. It doesn't happen every year because that's what funds the urgent, um, expenditures, their investigations, their cars. Um, cause our urgent guy gets a car from them, from the county. Um, so the, a lot of the seizure money goes back into the unit itself, uh, for their equipment, their training, their cars, their surveillance stuff, whatever it is that they might need, um, other than salaries.
Jerry, is it always the same guy?
It hasn't been always the same guy. We, this is our third, third member now.
During the year, do you switch out?
No, no. The, uh, the first guy left, the only reason he's not an urgent member is he left the department, went to, uh, East Fishville. The second guy resigned and this is the third guy that's in there and they love him.
But during the year, if you, you keep the same guy on if you can.
I, I do. We don't change him out unless there's a reason, there's a problem, there's an issue. Only because they get trained so much by urgent for what they do. They get undercover training, they get all kinds of stuff. So it doesn't make sense to be switching him out unless we absolutely have to.
Thank you.
Yes.
The, uh, people that are assigned to this, are they generally a full-time?
In, currently, yes. It is a full-time officer. It goes up there two days a week. Um, prior, the guy prior to that was a part-timer. And then the guy prior to that was a full-timer. Uh, just seems to work out better with the full-timers. Their availability is a little, little more set, I guess. Um, so it works very well.
Does it cost the judging process, are you scheduling wise?
No, the, the open shifts get covered by the part-timers. They know they're open every week, the days that he goes. So, um, never really a problem. Never at all. Um, just, and the other thing to follow up on the resolution, the, uh, county made some adjustments to the identifications. So we're, we as a town are better covered by the county. And that's.
There's something in the resolution that has to be changed or amended.
This is the new one.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
It's the right.
This is the new one.
This is the right.
Correct. Right. So that, that's the county. So we already did this once, not too long ago.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Not long ago at all.
Right.